Okay, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Bath Charter Township Planning Commission. It is May 25th, 2021. So let's start with the roll call and disclosure of virtual attendance. Nick?
Baker?
Attending virtually from Office Bath Township.
Phewens Bliss?
Here, attending virtually in my home in Bath Township, soon to be the soccer field in Bath Township.
All right, Tramer?
I'm attending virtually from my home in Bath Township.
Reich?
I'm attending from my home in Bath Township.
Severi?
Attending virtually from my home in Bath Township.
Okay, I think only a couple of people were here when I said this. Joel Gutske will not be here this evening, but he did let me know in advance.
Okay, thanks. Are there any changes to the agenda as distributed?
Dan, if I may, I wanted to propose a very small change. I think it might be appropriate for the Planning Commission to move the franchise, the WOW franchise agreement that we talked about a couple of weeks ago back up to the board, because this particular franchise agreement talks specifically about television service.
Okay, so we were formally given that to kind of look at, and so you think requires action, you're saying? I thought we left it that the township attorney was going to kind of look at that and see what options we might have to negotiate those terms.
Yep, so you know, we do have, Karen is here, just so she can maybe explain a little bit better than I can what her thinking was. I talked with her on this. So that agreement that was sent to us from the board specifically talks about television. It doesn't have anything to do with the internet service. I did reach out to the township attorney for guidance as it relates to WOW's internet service, but that would be a separate franchise agreement. That's my understanding.
Okay, and we haven't seen that franchise agreement, I guess, right?
We haven't seen the other internet one, no.
Okay.
Karen, am I getting anything there?
What I can add is that Chris had indicated that we could do an RFP process and allow other providers an opportunity to bring their service to our community. But I think it's creating some confusion because this is a cable franchise agreement and not an internet franchise agreement. So I believe that we're trying to use cable franchise, I guess, in the wrong way to strengthen the internet service.
Okay, and then so you want eventually some formal motion to kick this back to the board? Is that what you're thinking, Nick?
I think that would be appropriate. I mean, we can certainly just send it back to the board, but.
Okay, we can put it under old business. That's fine.
Okay.
Any other, any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Support?
Is there support from Ray? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose the same sign. Okay, so the agenda has been approved. Planning Commissioners, you have an opportunity to disclose any conflicts of interest. Okay, I don't see any. We have first opportunity for general public comment. So if there's anyone that's attending virtually tonight, if you'd like to address the Planning Commission, please raise your hand or indicate in some way you'd like to address the Planning Commission. I don't see anybody. Okay, let's move on. So we have the minutes of May 11th, 2021 to approve. First, are there comments or changes to those minutes as distributed?
I move they be approved as written.
Okay, we have support.
I'll support.
Thank you, George. All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
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 Oppose the same sign, and the minutes have been approved. All right, so communications. Taylor, this is to you, an update on the comprehensive plan.
Good evening. Yeah, so I have been working with Catherine since the last time I gave an update, which I believe was maybe a month and a half, two months ago. She has all of the written sections of the plan. I gave her the last couple that Nick needed to get to me before I left for vacation about two weeks ago. So she has been working on that pretty heavily for two weeks. I do have a small, rough draft that I am going to screen share with you all so that you can just get an idea of kind of how it's going to be looking. Just a second. So just as a disclaimer, the PDF version of this, it didn't PDF well, so as you can see, there's some bleed over. When it's final, there won't be any of that. There are a couple typos. I've already sent those over to her. So this is just kind of just for visual purposes, if you will. So yeah, so this is the cover that she has currently. This is also a compressed file, so some of the photos and like our logo might look a little bit blurry right now. And they will not look like that later on. So yeah, I think, I think how she has it right now visually, it looks a lot better than any comprehensive plan we've probably ever had, so that's exciting. She's definitely taken a lot of ideas from the plan that I shared with you all from North Carolina. And she's incorporated a lot of really good visuals from there. And she's also worked on a few other comprehensive plans around the area too. So I know she has some good experience with creating graphics for these kind of rural communities and things of that nature. So I think it's looking really good so far. And hopefully I will have more drafts to share with you coming up soon. The plan right now is for us to have kind of a final rough draft here in the next two to three weeks. And then from there, I'll be able to start kind of sharing it with you all and getting your input and making any additional changes that we need to do.
Thanks, Taylor. Man, it looks miles and miles and miles ahead of where we were before.
Yes.
It looks really, really good, I think. Other comments or questions by Commissioners?
One comment, the graphics, I think, look good. It looks like some of those are not from Bath Township, and we probably can't get enough from Bath Township. But I think as much as possible, we should try to use graphics from Bath Township. But what we're looking at right now, I'm not sure where that is.
Yes, so I should have mentioned that as well. A lot of these photos right now are stock photos. I will be getting a new camera for my department, which is only me, but so that was in the budget for me this year. So as soon as I have that, I will be taking updated pictures of pretty much the entire township, and those will be included in here as I start creating those. And we do have some photos in our archives that are decent enough that can be included in this right now. But I will be adding new photos to this after I get the whole thing in my possession.
It sounds good.
Taylor, are you getting, are you getting a drone too?
That would be really cool. I don't have a license for a drone. I don't know how to use one, but that'd be a good bucket list item.
All right. Karen, we want a drone.
All right, well, if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer those right now. Otherwise, if you have any questions later on, feel free to contact me.
Thanks, Taylor.
I think that looks great, Taylor. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, so let's move on. Item number eight is old business. Let's, yeah, let's do the public hearing first. So public hearing for the landscape ordinance, and Nick, do you want to lead us into this discussion? Sure, so I provided both a marked up and a not marked up version of the landscape ordinance. The marked up version, of course, shows all the changes that have been made since the last time you all have seen this. Happy to go sort of item by item, but I think there are some bigger picture pieces here that probably warrant some discussion. So first of all, on the top of the second page, I added some language just talking about preservation of existing significant vegetation, essentially stating that, you know, to the fullest extent reasonably possible, existing vegetation should be preserved. And then sort of providing a little bit more specificity there, saying that the top priority as it relates to that preservation should be healthy trees that have reached maturity. I also added a little note there that any trees that are, happen to be on our prohibited, it says tree list, but it's supposed to say plant list, should be removed during the development process. Moving a little bit further down, just added some language about a minimum percentage of a site that should be landscaped. Again, I'm not married to those percentages, but I just wanted to provide something to work with. I know we had talked a little, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, how do those relate to, you know, elsewhere in our ordinance? We talk about impervious surfaces, I guess, right? So are they, I'm sure they are, in line with other requirements in the ordinance for lot coverage? Lot coverage, yeah.
Yeah, so we do have a lot of coverage on our work plan for this year as an item of discussion. I was working on that a little bit today. So those percentages might be a little bit high. You know, having looked at them now after letting them sit over the weekend, I think they are a little bit high. But none of those percentages are going to be restrictive to the point of interfering with lot coverage in other areas.
Okay. Okay, sorry to interrupt. You can go ahead.
No, it's okay. So the next point that I changed, I know we had a little bit of discussion about the lawn and landscaped areas having soil, excuse me, topsoil or compost, and that sort of being like a landscaping best practice. It was my recollection that we talked about removing that, but I'm certainly happy to put that back in if we think that's appropriate. See, also on that page, just a couple of minor typographical changes. So the next page, when we get to the parking lot landscaping, is really when we have our first significant change. I largely rewrote that entire section just to provide a bit more clarity on the intent behind this section and then also provide some more detailed guidelines. A lot of the communities I was looking at, they had language requiring a planting island after every, you know, somewhere between eight and 15 spaces to break up, break up the parking spaces and also to provide for shade trees and things like that. The way I have it written here, it would be 10 contiguous spaces within a row. And then adding language stating that the actual parking space rows would need to be separated from driving lanes by a planting island. Some more language in there talking about breaking up the parking areas into smaller parking areas with additional green space and then setting some standards for the size of those, excuse me, planting islands and planting strips. You know, again, the intent there is just to break that up, provide for more green space. Of course, there's the aesthetics to that as well, but there are, you know, plenty of environmental benefits as well. So continuing along, again, just some typographical changes that were made. If we go to the following page under G, I added this section here about snow management. I know we've talked about this a handful of times in the time that I've been with the township about, you know, management of snow and where that's going to go on a property. You know, the particular situation that comes to mind is when we were talking about sunrise, it's not sunrise forest, autumn harvest. You know, the discussion was where are we going to put all that snow so that it doesn't block parking spaces, but also doesn't cause any other issues? So this was some model ordinance language I found, actually for, it was intended for Colorado, but I think it does apply here, and it does at least indicate that they need to point out where their quote unquote "snow management" areas would be so that we would have a better idea of where they would be placing that. So I guess since we're right here, does anybody have any questions about that language?
I do have, go ahead, George.
I was just gonna point out, I didn't, I didn't think of some of those things. It was quite interesting to read that. Like that.
I was gonna go back up, if you don't mind, to the what do they call it, planting islands, you called them?
Yeah.
I like the spirit of this here. I just wonder if, you know, when you're tying parking spaces to the number of islands, if you're incentivizing smaller islands. Smaller islands, but more islands, and I'm wondering if that's always a good thing rather than large expanses or bigger islands. I'm kind of thinking out loud here, so I'm not sure.
Right.
How I feel about it. I'm just wondering, yeah, George?
I'm, I'm thinking out loud too, I guess, because we just talked about the snow. So you have more islands, you have more work to do when you're pounding, when you're moving the snow, if you have more than small islands, you have a lot more work on that lot doing that too.
Okay, that's something I can sort of model out on paper and see how that shakes out.
Okay, John, you have a comment?
I think we've found that those small islands don't work well. They've turned into just abandoned rock mounds. I can't see the practicality of that, so.
I think we're better off. They're harder, you know, they're harder to maintain, you know, but on the other side, I think it's the intent, at least some of the language here, is to break up the large expansive asphalt, which, you know, so the smaller, more numerous islands probably do that better than one large island. So there's a little trade off here, right? I mean, ease of maintenance, probably environmental benefit, but versus the aesthetics of a parking lot and trying to break up large expanses of impervious surfaces.
I would totally agree with you, Dan, but I don't think that little rock mounds in the parking lot are that aesthetically pleasing, nor do they really add to the environmental impact. I think they detract from it rather than add to it. I think we'd be better off with more concentrated plantings.
I know at one point we had talked about restricting the use of stone as a ground cover, particularly in those islands of medians. At least from what I could see here is through a quick scan, it looks like I did not add that language. I'm assuming that's probably something we would still want to pursue. I think that would solve that problem.
It's gotta be something that's gonna survive there though, Nick, without a lot of extensive care, otherwise you're right back to the environmental issue, and is it gonna be maintained?
Think that's a fair point.
I think it depends on what kind of, besides the tree, what else goes in there? You don't want to put grass in there, then they gotta mow it, but there should be some shrubs available that are kind of salt tolerant and would grow almost anywhere.
Yeah, and certainly trees. I think you can, you can address that problem. George, did you have a comment?
I was just gonna say, I said something about the snow removal, but you know, that being said, I don't bow drivers, so I don't know practicality of my comment, you know, about the smaller versus bigger spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that there's, there's probably, we gotta do the math here a little bit, you know? So we have so many planting islands required. There is a minimum width of six feet. You have to have at least two shade, two shade trees planted per island, but you can't have them closer than 10 feet together. So all of this, to me, sounds like it, it could get tricky for a developer to make sure they're meeting all of those requirements.
So the minimum length or the minimum size of an island there, based on those requirements, that it, you know, fill the length of the parking space, it's gonna end up being, had that math yesterday, it's gonna be like 72 square feet at a minimum. Because you're talking about six feet wide by, you know, the length of, of two parking spaces, so. Thank you, Winston. Actually, more than, than 72 square feet, but you know, you're talking about probably somewhere between 20 and 24 feet long by six feet wide. I don't think you're gonna have an issue, in my opinion, but again, I'm, I'm happy to, to model that out on paper.
And that probably is the most common configuration, but I'm just wondering if there's other configurations here that might lead to smaller islands. You know, you're, you're talking about two parking lanes basically abutting each other, right? Coming together? Yeah. I'm not sure what I think. I just think that it, we should just think about it a little bit, right? To make sure that we're doing what we intend to do here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not married to that language. I just don't want a giant expansive parking lot that has nothing but asphalt because that doesn't look good and it causes problems.
I agree. Ray, did I see your hand up? Go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, I did. Except for an odd shaped parking lot, most of these parking islands that are going to be in there are actually going to be 40 feet long because they'll go across two parking lot. You know, like at the, at the, at the ends, unless it's a parallelogram parking or something, but if it's a rectangular parking, then the end spaces, the end landscape areas are gonna be six feet wide by 40 feet long.
Yes. Two parking slots, you're saying? Yeah. Yeah.
And even, even the ones internal would be pretty much, pretty much the same thing.
I feel like that, that validates the 10 feet apart for the trees even more so.
Yeah, in fact, depending on the kind of trees, 10 feet all close together.
That's correct.
That's why it says no more than.
Yeah, because if you got, if you got really taller trees, they're gonna, and they're gonna have to be taller trees because they're gonna have to be seven feet to the, to the branches, so people can walk under them. You may want to have them a lot more than that.
I think the language that he has allows for that, right? Just no, oh yeah, the minimum is 10 feet. Yep, do you wanna, if there's no other comments on this part, we can keep moving, Nick, if you want to.
Okay. Okay, so we talked about the snow management a little bit, so I guess the next section would be street trees. I know we've had at least two somewhat lengthy conversations about sort of that, that appropriate location from the edge of the road right of way, which would be that, that tree lawn. John had mentioned yesterday, when I met with him, that he really liked the spacing for the trees over off of West Road, the MSU FCU headquarters. And John, I just wanted to let you know, I measured that tree lawn and it's 12 feet wide. So twice as wide as, as what's proposed here. So you know, I, I thought for the purposes of, of what we have here, defining that width, at least as a starting point for that conversation. And then, excuse me, adding language for if there's existing sidewalk to clarify that if it's already there, the tree lawn would be the space between the sidewalk and the edge of the road or the edge of the road right of way. The, you know, one street tree per 40 feet of lot width or road frontage is pretty standard, from what I've seen. Again, it, it depends on the, the tree species, but that's what I saw as, as pretty typical as a baseline. You know, to try and prevent the issue of the trees, you know, doing notable damage to the curb or the sidewalks, just so that they can't be planted any closer than three feet to the curb or sidewalk. Cleaned up that language a little bit about where these apply and then added clarification that existing trees, if they were on the street tree list, would be able to be used to fulfill the street tree requirement. And then cleaned up the language there a little bit about the native species requirement. And it looks like that's the end of, of the draft ordinance there.
So maybe we should talk about street trees just a little bit. Nick, can you, so I'm trying to think about this tree lawn area. We have quite a bit of flexibility if we're just talking about the, the width of the right of way, right? So the tree lawn could be six feet or it could be much wider than that. Is that correct?
The way it's written right there, it would be specifically six feet. You know, the intent there, my concern is if, you know, we allow flexibility there and you have one property where they decide they want it to be six feet wide, and another property, they decide, okay, well, no, we want 10 feet or we want eight feet. Then if a sidewalk ends up going in, then the sidewalk's not gonna line up perfectly as it goes down the street. They would end up being kind of goofy and zigzaggy. You know, I think ideally the sidewalk would be a uniform straight line, so. I'm not sure how to approach that.
Elsewhere in our ordinance, do we have language about sidewalk placement? In terms of where in the right of way those would be placed? And I, I, you know, John's concerned, and I share it, right, is that you don't want those sidewalks built too close to the curb because then you've got not enough room for street trees. And you know, even according to the ordinance here, if you've got only a six foot or less, if you got a six foot distance between the sidewalk and the curb, you probably can't plant any, any, any street trees, right? Because they, they can't be within three feet of either one. So I'm just wondering, so, so it seems like we gotta think about street trees at the same time we think about where sidewalks go in our township.
Yeah, I'm searching through our subdivision regulations to see what it says about sidewalks.
On that tree lawn or whatever we're calling that thing, six feet should be the minimum, but then I guess the question is, when you say the tree can't be closer than three feet, are we talking about the center line of the tree or the edge of the tree? Because.
I, I'm not gonna get into that level of semantics.
I think we should be taking these measurements from the center of the tree because in 10 years, that tree's gonna be a foot across, not gonna be, you know. The other thing, as far as the width of that lawn area that whatever we're calling the thing, it could be minimum of six feet, but must be uniform the entire subdivision. So now if somebody says they want it to be 10 feet, it's gotta be 10 feet the entire subdivision. It shouldn't, I agree, it should not vary from house to house.
So what I see here within our subdivision regulations, as it relates to sidewalks, it says sidewalks may be required by the Planning Commission or the Township Board for subdivisions if deemed necessary by either of those bodies. Does not state anything about placement of sidewalks as it relates to the edge of the road or the, the road right of way.
So it sounds though that we have the flexibility, as long as we have the awareness, right, to make sure that the sidewalks provide enough space for street trees.
Right.
John?
There's also a section in there that says that the street trees aren't to be planted within 10 feet of a utility.
It doesn't say within 10 feet.
I thought it did.
Oh, I see what, so that's on the last page.
Yep.
Last page. It says small tree. Yeah, small trees. So that was some language that got held over. Thank you for catching that again, John.
That and the H.
I'm sorry?
I was trying to find out who that was, the last page.
Yeah, it's 5A. Placement near utilities.
So this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the public hearing, and that's, I think we, we can come back to our own discussion here, but let's see if the, anyone attending from the public would like to comment on this draft ordinance. Jeff?
Hey, how's everyone doing? Um, I just wanted to, uh, you know, give props to the planning director for attempting, uh, you know, to implement a progressive ordinance like this. As a developer, I often hate things like this because it means that it's more work that I have to do. But, um, at the same time, I I think I really appreciate the intent of what what he's trying to do there and and I I think it would really beautify the township if some version of it gets adopted.
Thanks, John. Other comments from public? Okay, we'll leave the public hearing open, um, but we can go back to our own discussion and so if anyone, though, from the public has a question, just raise your hand, we can go back and take questions or take comments too, as necessary. So commissioners, uh, I guess we've gone through the entire ordinance. Are there other comments or questions that you want to make? Ray?
Back to the page, the last page. I was looking at my version of that, it's got a, uh, street trees, one, two, three, four. There is no five, oh, five, I see, five's just not where it's supposed to be. Five's intended on my, intended into the middle of paragraph.
It's above the A.
Yeah, about the, uh, smallest species.
Uh huh, yeah. The formatting's a little funky, but I'm sure that'll get cleaned up.
Yep, I just missed that where the five was, I was looking for it, didn't see it. Okay.
Is the six-feet minimum, is that something, Nick, that you found elsewhere? Um, you know, that is a minimum in terms of you'd never want to go any, any narrower, I think, but why not? Why not set the minimum at eight feet, for example?
Yeah.
Do we have some places in the township where the sidewalk and the curb are six feet apart, for example?
Um, you know, I'd be happy to go out and measure a variety of different places, but, uh, you know, from a lot of places I'd seen six feet was that standard? Uh, I don't think there's anything wrong with it being eight feet or even ten feet. You know, it's just, um, sort of ties in with with a conversation about setbacks. You know, we certainly would want to do everything we could to keep, uh, the sidewalk and the street trees, uh, you know, with within the setbacks, so that we're not taking away buildable area from a property owner.
Yeah, I'm not sure. You know, to me, the sidewalk and the street tree should be as far off the road as we can get them within reason. You just think about snow removal, especially if there's a sidewalk. Because when they plow the street, they're gonna push that snow back more than six feet off the road, so they plow right onto the sidewalk, then the homeowner's gotta come move it again. So I think that why do we can get that lawn area between the sidewalk and the street? You know, my ideal has always been ten feet, but you know, something more than six would be good.
I think the shortest setback we have is twenty or twenty-five feet.
I think, uh.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking the side.
Yeah.
The sidewalk should be within the street right of way.
It has to be, right?
Doesn't have to be, but if there isn't, it's gotta be an easement.
Yeah. So, ten feet in a residential area seems very wide to me. Uh, ten feet in a commercial area, like along the MSU credit union, I think the example that John had indicated, that seems reasonable, right? But ten feet in a residential area, that seems pretty extreme. John?
I thought the original intention of this ordinance was it was only gonna apply to commercial development.
It would apply if a new subdivision was developed to the subdivision as a whole and then the individual property owners or a homeowners association would maintain the trees. But on a parcel-by-parcel basis, it would be largely commercial.
So what do we think about two standards, one for residential and one for commercial? Or maybe then we run into, I guess, problems with the sidewalks aligning that Nick alluded to. George?
I was gonna say that, and also, um, we do want to consider that Webster Road, you know, that's pretty tight, six foot. That, you know, in instance, I think, you know, you got, I mean, it could be right next to the road, but I, like Ray said, you know, the pile things. I don't know what that's gonna look like, so I don't know how much time we got to think about this.
I think that we're we're not doing anything with this tonight, other than completing our public hearing, but I think it's gotta come back to us for sure. So Nick, maybe, uh, just, um, I guess, give it more thought and we can talk, but maybe see if there's some other examples out there, options to consider. Uh, it sounds like we want to kind of make that a little larger than six feet, but. Ray?
Yeah, I think one thing we're gonna decide on is how wide right of way do we want for a residential street in a subdivision? You know, sixty-six feet has always been kind of the standard, but that's awfully wide. Because I was just looking at this, if you had a sixty-six-foot right of way with two eleven-foot lanes and two eight-foot parking lanes, so you had parking on both sides of the street, that's nineteen feet out of a thirty-three-foot half the width, that leaves fourteen feet for the for the grass and the sidewalk. If the sidewalk's a foot from the roadway line, which normally they would be, that leaves you thirteen feet. Five-foot sidewalk, that leaves you eight feet for the grass. And even a street that's thirty-eight feet wide, you know, parking in two lanes, that's really wide for a residential street, it doesn't need to be that wide. So I think that's something we need to take a look at and decide, how wide do we want these residential streets to be? That'll impact our lawn area.
Do we have that choice to, and how wide we make residential streets? I didn't think we did, it's a county standard, right?
Yes, that's the county standard and unless the county reneges on the sixty-six-foot right of way, that's the right of way you're gonna have.
I think we need to talk to the county about that, because there are other counties that allow a lot narrower street to not for residential street. Take a look at Hocknest in East Lansing. Now that, I agree, is pretty tight, but that's nowhere near sixty-six feet.
Yeah, we've we've had been talking about this issue a lot, you know, when we first banned the use of private roads in the township, it was always the intention that we would have a conversation with the county to have a second standard, right? Not their full county standard, but something for the more rural character or residential character of our township, but I don't know if that's gone anywhere, but your your point is a good one, Ray. I think we should have a lesser standard than than the current county standard. George?
I I did talk to them briefly about that. And I I think they're hoping to do discussion, so if we could have a discussion with them sometime, invite them, give them a heads up.
You know, one of the items on the agenda later on is environmental issues to be looked at. And I think reducing the amount of hard surface in the township would be a good thing, so if we narrow these streets down, that would be a good environmental improvement.
I agree. Yeah, they just don't make sense for a lot of our neighborhoods.
Nope.
We're just meeting too.
Seems to me like there's two issues here, one is the right of way and the other is the width of the street. And I would agree that the street doesn't need to be that wide, but I don't know that we want to give up the right of way. Uh, you're gonna have, if you're gonna do some of the roads that we talked to the county about previously, you're gonna have some open swale ditching along the roads, and I don't know that you're gonna put that in a reduced right of way and still have space for something else, a sidewalk or trees or anything, and still keep them in the right of way.
I think it depends on whether or not you have open swale or curb and gutter, the two different, two different cross-sections.
I agree.
And I think that when we first talked about this issue of a second standard, we thought that, you know, we maybe would be not insisting on curb and gutter in smaller streets in the township, something, something else, but George?
I was just gonna mention that, I I do agree with you on if we could have some flexibility and Nick could work with that, line and sidewalks and stuff up there. I think it would be good for us if we could. Some type of flexibility between the different developments.
Well, I think the other thing we've got to consider for new subdivisions, are we going to require sidewalks?
So Nick, uh, the language that you read back, that was the the only language really about sidewalks, so we have the discretion, I think, right, to require sidewalks.
Should be consistent too.
Isn't that correct? And I know that we've been flexible on that, like, uh, I forget the development of the White Hills area, right? I think we, or is it? I forget, but we didn't require sidewalks on both sides, right? We required sidewalks on one side, for example.
Yeah, that was that was Bonnie Meadows. Um, yeah, that only rang a bell for me, because I had a phone call from the developer today. I know that, like you said, we, the planning commission does have the discretion there, and it's certainly uh, something where in the past, you know, they've said, well, we don't want it on both sides, what about one side? You know, there's plenty of, I I I think context is important, for one thing, but there's plenty of data and research out there to back up the fact that, you know, people want to be able to walk and our built environment is not set up for that. Really at all. Um, so trying to to get us more in that direction, I think, would be a good thing. So, you know, again, I think it's context-dependent.
I agree, I mean, I I think I agree with both of you that, you know, if we don't, um, if our standard or ordinance is not clear enough and our preference that we do typically include sidewalks, maybe we ought to make it a little stronger.
All right, well, I'll reach out to the mention about the the road width issue.
Okay. George?
And if we, if we do take away sidewalks, do we really want to narrow the roads? And I mean, just consider that.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Like, if you, if you have a subdivision and you're allowing only partial sidewalks or no sidewalks, and we narrow the road, it's, we have a lot of foot traffic as it is, even to town, down around the lake, know where the roads are already narrow and sidewalks.
I personally think not requiring sidewalks in a new development would be a mistake, but you know, I I think there are multiple merits to widening travel lanes, particularly within a residential subdivision.
Yep. All right, so, um, yeah, Ryan?
I noticed a couple of other small numbering and lettering orders, so just want to make sure we clean that up. And then I have a question in, you know, I'm still learning, so this may be stupid, but as we look at the percentages you were talking about, Nick, uh, based on land use for the amount of landscaped area, would we measure that in square feet?
Yeah, it would be square feet as a percentage of the entire lot.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, I think those percentages might be a little bit high. I wouldn't be opposed to reducing those by five percent for each of those, but I haven't heard from any of you all as to how you feel about that. This would be on the second page of of the draft ordinance.
You know, I'm just going back to the just gonna go back to the conversation about lot coverage, right? So.
Yeah.
Isn't this essentially the same thing? I mean, if something is not, well, I guess there's maybe the the gray areas, whether like a cement patio counts towards lot coverage, which would be a pervious surface, an impervious surface. Right? Uh, I guess I'm forgetting kind of how that works, we've had those issues before the ZBA a few times. But I think lot coverage is just essentially the the building and attached structures, is that correct? Does not include.
Yeah, the way we have it currently defined, it's only if it's a structure, so, uh, it would only be the house, a deck, a shed, things like that, uh, driveway or a patio would not be part of the lot coverage under our current definition. Um, but I know we did talk about that as it relates to, uh, impervious surfaces.
But essentially, when you combine that then with these requirements, we are we're getting at the issue of impervious surfaces. What what's allowed in impervious surfaces is the difference between lot coverage and required landscape area, I guess, right?
Yeah, that sounds right.
More or less. Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm thinking out loud, sorry, just thinking and I'm trying to, you know, because I don't, these numbers don't mean anything to me, you know, whether they're big or small, or, you know, I I'm trying to kind of contextualize these numbers so I can understand them a little bit better.
Yeah, I'll find some other examples and compare them against that.
Okay, okay.
What might be helpful would be to take a look at some developments that have just been finished, like Nokaloff's, and figure out what percent of those developments are landscaped. That's why we need Taylor's drone.
Yeah, well, I guess as it relates to Nok, that depends on if you want a serious answer or not.
I'm guessing that Nokaloff's is an example of far less green space than, what would it be then, twenty-five percent?
Yeah, it's definitely not twenty-five percent.
No.
Yeah.
But it'd be good to look at some examples and figure what percentage is, look at some examples we like and say, okay, what percentage is that?
Right, because you still have to meet parking requirements, um, and a few other things, right? So it has to be somewhat compatible to to those other standards.
Okay.
All right, uh, okay, so I think we're bringing this back, um, last opportunity from anybody from the public who wants to comment on this draft of the landscape ordinance. Okay, I'm not seeing any takers, I'm gonna close the public hearing, so, so Nick, um, I guess we bring this back when you, when you think that you have enough for us to have another discussion, okay?
Will do.
Okay, thanks a lot, Nick, for your work on this. Uh, so we had an item we added under old business and this was just the, uh, the ordinance pertaining to the WOW cable franchise agreement, so, uh, is there a motion to, uh, send this issue back toward to the board for their review?
So move.
Ray, uh, John, I think, got a second, is there any further discussion here?
What what are we gonna direct the board to do, Dan?
We're not directing the board, the board.
What are we gonna recommend? We just want to give it back to them, period, nothing?
Yeah, I think it was a mistake that it was sent to us, is what I'm understanding, because it doesn't pertain, uh, to the broadband issue, which is why I think it was sent to us originally, so I think we're just saying, it's back in your court, we didn't do anything, um, and, you know, you guys decide what the next step is. I think that's, unless I'm missing something, George?
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna ask Nick or Karen if they could just clear clarify that, that this is, uh, not not a broadband issue but a cable or TV issue. Is that what the contract is, essentially?
Hundred percent correct, this franchise agreement doesn't have anything to do with internet.
Okay. I think it just cleans our plate of this issue, basically.
Well, trustee Bliss is of, is in the meeting again, um, you know what the reading of the board is on this, Ryan?
Uh, sort of, I I agree with the determination we've made here that it's it's separate, and so I think it just got lumped in because it's wow, and we have concerns about wow as the internet. Uh, I brought those up during the board meeting, but the board still felt like we should send it for all of us to review, ultimately, my reading, and Karen and Nick can can disagree for sure. I I think we're past the deadlines anyway, I mean, it sort of feels like this ship has sailed, our ability to do anything is really limited, unless we felt like really strongly about something and wanted to to fight for it, but it doesn't sound like anybody feels really strongly about the this part of WOW's service.
I I think that's correct, I mean, I haven't heard anybody complaining about cable service.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have support, uh, to send this issue back to the Board of Trustees.
I'm sorry, can I just get clarification on who seconded that?
I think it was John did. All right, so all in favor of the motion, say aye. And oppose the same sign? All right, good. Uh, so the next item under new business is Sunrise Four, Sunrise Forest, so we have an updated site plan, and again, this is a, uh. Somewhat a informal review of the site plan, my understanding is. Um, so Nick, you want to kind of lead us in, and then I think we'll probably ask that and or Jeff to. Comment on the site plan.
Yeah, so I don't have much to share here, um, other than. Excuse me, this is a, a modified site plan, um, includes an expansion of. Uh, some additional square footage inside the building for an additional tenant. Um, I believe it's going to be a diner. And, uh, they've also provided us with some updated architectural rendering renderings, which I always appreciate. Um, so, you know, it looks like the building in terms of the, the exterior design is, is headed in, uh. An even better direction. Um, and then, like I said, just some added space on the interior for an additional tenant, so. Uh, I guess really from there, I'll just hand it over to Jeff and Thad if they have any, anything else they want to add here.
Yeah, great. It would just be great to get a summary of, uh, kind of what's changed since we saw your, your preliminary site plan.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. So, um, this is, uh, one of those great cases where we got to under promise and over deliver, I hope. Um, here we, we've, um, actually landed, uh, a local diner, um, Good Truck and Diner, based out of Rio Town. In Lansing, um, who desires to lease, uh, space there, so. We expanded the footprint in order to accommodate that request from. You know, I think it was six, seven thousand square feet, now we're looking at more like ten thousand square feet. Um, so that should add, you know, a, a nice element to, to this part of this development. Um. We've tweaked a whole bunch of small things on the site plan since what was approved, uh, you'll notice some of the radiuses are a little bit better. We moved the dumpster location a little bit. Um, we've actually kind of designed the site in such a way that can accommodate a little bit more pass through because. Um, soon, uh, we'll be coming to you, uh, to discuss, uh, our development to the north of here. So that's, that started being, that's sort of being master planned into this now, so. Um, we made some adjustments to accommodate for that. Um, hopefully, actually, next meeting, uh, we'll be here for that. And, um, let's see. You know, ultimately, we just made a bunch of small tweaks in order to make the project better. Um, as you all probably know, construction costs have gone up dramatically and. Um, we. Are just doing it anyway. And, um, actually making it nicer than we originally anticipated, really kind of doubling down on, on making a nice building and. Spending what we have to do in order for it to, to get where we need it to get. Um, the, yeah, so I'm here to answer any questions anybody has, um, on the tweaks and. Um, hope that the township's happy with the direction we're going.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, Thad, anything to add to that?
No, I didn't even realize that wasn't still muted, but great to see you all.
Um, I guess just before we open this up to any questions, I do just want to clarify, this is a, a proposed site plan amendment, so. Um, just a, a quick refresher, this was approved by the planning commission. Um, and the township board, and so this is a, a proposed amendment to that existing site plan.
Thanks for correcting me, Nick, yep.
Also, if you'll notice, um, we have started preparing the site, so we do have a bunch of. Heavy equipment over there and it's, it's a lot easier at this point to. Um, kind of understand the direction of where it's going, and along with that, we'll be, uh, inviting, uh, some or all of you to the. Um. You know, kind of a formal groundbreaking here in the coming weeks.
John?
Ray, you had a, uh, question about the drive-through and I had the same concern that if there was enough room. Not to get trapped in the drive-through, is that resolved?
I, I, I got a technical question. I can't open the sheets. I read, I read the entire. Stuff, but when I get down to your plans, I just get a. Small pieces of it and I get nothing more.
All right, well, I know everybody wants to see everybody else's bright shining faces, but let me share my screen so I can show the plans.
Thank you.
So that drive looks like it's about eighteen feet wide.
It's just, as, as for regular passenger cars. They can fit through there. Nine, yeah, nine-foot lanes, just for historical species, people are familiar with Martin Luther King through Lansing. That used to have nine-foot lanes on that road before they rebuilt it. And it worked. So for a drive-through. That should be okay. In a twenty-five-foot radius, yeah, twenty-foot inside, it's okay. So I think that'll work.
Nick, uh.
We've, uh, we've certainly spent a lot of time agonizing over those radiuses and, and drive widths because it really affects that corner of the site. And I'm a, I'm a guy that pulls a trailer around a lot, so. I've certainly found myself in some adverse drive-through situations and, um, am hyper-aware of that, so. It's, uh.
Just don't, just don't build a wall right next to it.
Yeah, of course. If you gotta pop over the curb real quick, it's not as big.
The one on Lake Lansing Road, just west of twenty-seven. People have hit that wall with their bumper because it's so tight.
Oh, wow.
That's a Starbucks.
Yeah.
So Nick, I know that we're not holding them to that standard because we don't have a standard, but I'm just curious, uh, whether you think this. Proposed site plan would meet. The current language for the, uh. The islands in the parking lot.
Coincidentally enough, uh, yes, except for one spot. Here on the very far edge where it's fourteen spots.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, but. Given that there are a couple of islands where there's only three spaces, I'm not going to lose any sleep over that.
We did, uh, try to enter, we got a hold of that ordinance and tried to anticipate that when we were looking at it. Um, we realized that this is pre-ordinance, but at the same time. You know, we took it into at least consideration during that time.
Yeah, thanks for that. And my comment was really just to see if. How practical the, the current language is, right? And if this seems to. To meet those standards, then I guess that's a good thing for.
So, so right here where there are two sets of ten spaces, this is where there'd be an island breaking that up.
Yep.
There may be another set of ten below it if it were a large parking. Area. But, you know, just to give you a feel for what that would look like.
Right.
And on that large bank of spaces on the, um, on the east side. We actually have some super mature shade trees that'll be kind of overhanging that. So if this is a situation where we were working in that ordinance, we'd probably still design it like this and then come to you guys and ask you to. Make an exception for that because of the shade trees or something like that that exist.
Yep. One of these islands at the end is to me. Two shade trees in those islands is enough. Not one every ten feet.
Yeah. That could be the, that, they would still meet the standards if they were just two, right?
Yeah, it would.
I think, yeah. So how about, um? Coverage, landscape coverage. I mean, I don't know how we figure out, uh, percent area here, but. I'm just, again, thinking about. Tweaking our landscape ordering, ordinance. Looking at, uh, a, a proposal before us here.
It's topography. So I don't think any of these sheets is going to be an amended landscape plan.
We actually don't have our amended landscape plan back yet, so we're still kind of operating on the original landscape plan, just. Moving it around in our heads a little bit.
Yeah, so. At, at the moment, the only thing I can do is. Try and see how quickly I could get my work computer remoted into. I'll give that a shot if anybody has any other questions and see if. We can try and take a look at the original landscape plan.
Well, the, the, the key thing on this is when you've got a site this large. And you've got a percentage you're working with. If, you know, how big a site are we going to include in that calculation? Their site may be five acres, but the developed parts only. Two acres or whatever. So we're going to figure out what's going to be used in the. Equation.
I think that's a fair point as well.
So Jeff, you mentioned, I think, that, uh, you've kind of improved some of the materials and I'm looking at the architectural elevations. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're, what you're doing or what changes at least you've made?
Sure, um, what we originally submitted as our elevations and had approved was, uh, just kind of a simple, uh. You know, a single material, uh, masonry facade, um, with some, with some variation of, you know, false brick. Um, since then, uh, if you're looking at the, uh, elevation that's titled east elevation on sheets. Uh, let's see, sheet A five. Um, and also I think, Ray, I think I was having the same problem as you. I, I played around with the zoom button on the top because I'm actually navigating right from the township's website. I was able to see it in there. Maybe that helps, but, um. The, uh, so if you're, if you're looking at the east elevation, it's kind of difficult to understand the materials based just on this, but. Um, the top material, um, that looks like horizontal slats, that's actually a steel screening material that's, um, kind of like translucent. Um, to strong presence, but you can see through it a little bit. Um, the area that's just white that encompasses the right suite and kind of a. You know, a ninety-degree C shape that's tilted on its side. That's actually a, a concrete material, so that'll look like, uh, like a hard polished concrete. And then inside of that, the horizontal slot siding is, uh, real wood, so. Um, that'll be, so it'll be like, uh, uh, real dark tone wood right next to. Um, like kind of a nice hard-finished, uh, hard-trowelled concrete look. With, um, storefront glazing in between it. And then these overhangs that you see are actually, um, large I-beams with exposed steel. Um, with a wood sop at beneath it. So when it, when it all ties together, it looks really nice. I mean, we're. This building is going to stand proud right up on that hill and it'll be a thing that everybody sees, so we want to make sure that it's, it looks good when we have to drive by it. So. Um, we've really been kind of picky about these materials and, um, making sure that we, we deliver a, a product that we're proud of.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? John?
I looked those up, Jeff, and I thought that was a very good choice. I thought it's going to really look nice, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think so. Um, it's a lot harder than a single surface, um, but it'll, it'll look nice. Another, another important feature that is hard to tell in the. Elevations as we've kind of undulated the front of the building, so it's not just a flat surface. Um, so the suites will be kind of popping out at different depths. Um, you know, kind of, kind of reduces the strip mall effect, you know, um, makes it a little bit more appealing to the eye.
I thought that was an excellent choice.
Thank you.
And there, there's so many elements here that, uh, you know, we've kind of talked about when we were talking about architectural designs, right? So this mixture of materials, high-quality materials, lots of glazing in the front. Um, this undulation, you know, uh, we've talked about all of those things as. As going in a design book or a guidelines book, so it's, it's great to see this kind of example before us too. All right, any other comments? So I think we need a motion then to approve the amended site plan, is that correct, Nick?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the amended site plan.
All right, any support?
Board.
Support by Ray, okay, further discussion. See any further discussion, so let's put it to a vote, all in favor of the motion to approve the amended site plan for Sunrise Forest, say aye. Oppose the same sign? Okay, it has been approved. Jeff and Thad, thanks for coming tonight and, uh, explaining what you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next topic, uh, under new business is environmental planning. So Nick, I'm going to give this to you.
Okay, so, uh, Fee is here, so I'm hoping that she'll. Join in the conversation here if she has any thoughts about environmental topics as well. Um, so, you know, uh. Felicia, who goes by Fee, is my intern here for the summer. And, uh, in addition to. A bunch of, uh. My work she's helping me with. I'm hoping that there is, uh, something environmental related that the planning commission. Might want to, uh, increase their priority on to talk about. Um. I've talked with, with her about a couple of things. Uh, we talked a bit about the goals from the upcoming comprehensive plan that relate to. Uh. Excuse me, uh, rural prosperity and, uh, local food production. Um, I know that those were, uh. You know, largely, uh, Jason's baby, so I'm actually glad that he jumped in the meeting here. Um, because there is definitely some interest in that. Um, but I know that Dan also had provided us with a, a table that, um. Dan, you said you pulled this from a, an academic article that you had looked at?
Yeah, I did. It was sort of a review article just done sort of various ways that. Local governments have tried to incentivize or regulate sort of things related to sustainability, so. I think it, it's nice because it kind of breaks down sort of different sustainability kind of objectives. And then sort of attaches specific kind of regulatory approaches, so. It's quite comprehensive, I thought.
Okay, I'm happy to share that on my screen here. Just so everyone can look at it. I think some of these, uh, you know, like you had said, are maybe not. Uh.
Yep.
Really necessary for bath and some of these might be redundant or things that we've already looked at.
What do you mean?
Uh, but there are. Quite a few of these here, so. Uh, really, it, it looks like it breaks it down into some principles. It looks like there are nine of those. And then there's a long list of. Various regulatory items, so I guess just right off the bat. Excuse me. Uh, some of the. Topics that I know the planning commission has talked about in the past would include a wetlands ordinance. Um, and of course, we're working on a landscape ordinance right now. Uh, there's been talk about low-impact development. Uh, I've also, you know, had mentioned those goals from the comprehensive plan related to local food production and rural prosperity. Uh, there, I know at one point, a, a year or two ago, had been discussion about, uh, you know, conservation subdivision ordinance. Um. And, you know, even some things that may not necessarily be explicitly. Uh, environmentally related, but are sort of indirectly related, so. You know, I, I, I'm not sure what to do from here if we just kind of open this up and. See what people's thoughts are.
Yeah, I think so. Uh, it's, uh, when you look down this list, I mean, we, we are doing or have done some of these things at least, right? So. I guess for me, you know, and, and if Fee is going to kind of take the lead on this, you know, we should get Fee's input about. What she might be interested in, in doing, looking into, but. It seems like we've got a lot of things in the master plan that we have not yet gotten to, but we've identified as priorities. And if anything there, like. You know, promoting local food systems or the wetlands ordinance or, you know, any, any one of those things. Seems most appealing. It makes sense to me that we try to jump on some of those things from our master plan. But other comments or thoughts?
Lively group tonight.
Yeah.
So he, he's getting drunk.
Yeah. Um, so I guess just to jump back to the lot coverage for a second. Uh, that is, of course, on our work plan, that's sort of the next thing in line. Um, I had done a little bit of, of work on that today. Uh, just looking at a few other. Uh, definitions of lot coverage that do include impervious surfaces in that calculation. Um. And found a, a couple of really good ones, one from. From, uh. Minnesota and another one from New Jersey where they do include, uh, impervious surfaces like sidewalks or concrete, that sort of thing. Within their calculation. Uh, obviously, the next step on that would be determining what would be an appropriate. Percent calculation when you're including. Uh, those impervious surfaces in the, in the total percentage, you know, as it relates to each zoning district and how much of it we're allowed to. Allowing to be covered.
Right, I mean, I, I would imagine then, of course, the percentage would go up a little bit, I would guess, right?
Right. Yeah, I think that would be another situation where it might be appropriate for me to try and. Sort of model it out just based on. Probably the quote-unquote worst-case scenario, which I think would probably be like a. Probably the quote unquote worst case scenario, which I think would probably be like a, a big box store. Because that obviously is a big footprint and then a lot of parking spaces, so. Just trying to determine based on that requirement, what that percentage would look like, and then we can kind of work backwards from there.
Right. All right, so commissioners, you've got this list in the table, you've got our master plan. Anything jump out at you as things that? You could have Fee work on, Ray?
Well, not so much that, but I think when we talk about lot coverage, I think it makes a lot of sense to include all the hard surface areas in the lot coverage. Because if we're looking at environmental impacts. The driveways and sidewalks, you know, that's impervious. So that's. Not letting the water soak in, so I, I think we should include all hard services as part of lot coverage.
Yeah, I agree. I, I remember we had a case before us at the ZVA once, and I forget exactly. It was a variance from lot coverage, but you know, the conversation eventually went to the idea that. There's nothing preventing anybody, as far as I know, from paving over their entire, their yard. Because we don't have a landscape coverage, you know, and we don't have an impervious surface regulation. So there's nothing stopping that from happening, and obviously that's not a good thing.
You make an upsettingly good point.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, we, we could go into the thing about parking in front yards and stuff like that and say that. You know, I, I've seen an ordinance that says. The only part, the width of your driveway cannot exceed the width of your. Garage door, basically, maybe a little, a little bigger than that. Cannot park in the front yard unless it's a paved surface. You have to get special permission from the authorization from the planning commission. To pave your front yard. You've got to give a hardship or reason why you need that. So. Other, other places we can go.
It looks like Jason is still here, lingering.
I was, I was just going to mention, if you're looking for an order of. Kind of to go, maybe stick with what we're working on, like you guys were just talking about and. Like the parking lots that we were discussing last meeting. Kind of staying, we were on developments prior to that. Kind of sticking in, almost like kind of how the spreadsheet sent out kind of is almost. I don't know, but.
Yeah.
So it kind of looks like the flow kind of goes is what we've been doing almost.
Yeah, we pick up a lot of that, that's true. Or there are things in our master plan that we have not yet gotten to, but. That are there, right? Ray?
Just another comment on impervious services, you know, if the developer that comes in and wants to pave over more than what we allow, he has options of using. Porous pavements. That would allow, you know, it, when you put a porous pavement and you've got to go down a ways to make sure it places that water to go. But that's one option that has been used to help. Make sure that the water. Into the ground, even if you've got too much hard service.
Right, yeah, and there's more and more options, I think, for that now, too.
Yep.
And that was something I thought about. Related to the, just the parking within the landscape ordinance, whether there was any. Sort of. Made any sense to have any sort of incentive or. Anything like that related to, you know, alternatives to just asphalt.
John?
There's lots of innovations on porous services, Ray, and I totally agree with you. It's got a lot of potential, but it also requires maintenance or it plugs up and then it loses its effectiveness. It's not a one and done thing.
All right, well, I guess, you know, maybe we can continue on with what we're going. With right now, but maybe I can have another conversation with Fee. See if there's anything that jumps out at her and then maybe we can bring it back to you all and tell me if you think it's appropriate or not.
I think that's fine. I mean, I think what I would take away from this, let's make it a positive, is just that. There are no strong feelings either way, so I, I feel that the lane is wide open, Nick and Fee, that you can. You can figure out what's of interest to you and start working on it, so. But it would be a good idea if you, if you've got, you know, three or four things that seem most interesting, maybe coming back and, and having a short discussion about that.
Sounds good.
All right.
And I know she didn't really jump in, but I noticed she was getting a lot of microphone feedback.
Okay, no worries. Don't want to put her on the spot, and you guys can talk about that and they can bring it back to us.
Okay.
All right, so let's move on. Nick, do you have any further comments? Report from the planner.
I do, let me find that page. Okay, so I had a pre-application meeting just a few hours ago. With an engineering firm out of Wisconsin that is working with. Taco Bell about acquiring that outlot in front of Meyer. It's the same lot where the Zips Car Wash had been approved. But they didn't go through with the development presumably because of COVID. So I had a pre-application meeting with them. Looks like they are. Doing what pleases me, which is trying to use as little of that site as possible for. You know, impervious surfaces, so they're definitely not adding a bunch of excess parking. And it looks like they would be utilizing an access road on the Meyer property rather than trying to directly connect onto. Saginaw, so that reduces some traffic concerns. I look forward to working with them and having additional conversations about designing that site. Additionally, I know Jeff had mentioned that there is another project of his that's coming up. If you'll recall from back at the end of last year when we were first talking about Sunrise Forest. Jeff had mentioned the. Excuse me, the site just to the north of Sunrise Forest that he had been in the process of acquiring that. He has since acquired that and is looking to put in a sort of a hybrid stor- hybrid storage facility and in small industrial space. I met with him and his employee Matthew on Friday to talk a little bit about that. And I think it's going to be a good project. I'm curious to see exactly how that site shakes out. And just like Sunrise Forest, you know, they're, they're not going for the, the boring big box look in terms of architectural design. They want it to look nice. Especially since it'll be visible from the highway there, so. I, I expect that, you know, in the next meeting or two, depending on how quickly I get information from. From him, that, that will be coming back to the planning, or excuse me, will be coming to the planning commission as well for introduction. Aside from that, the only other thing I want to put out there is that finally, renovations in the back of the township offices are complete, so. We're all back in the office full time. And, you know, any of you, if you have questions or just want to chat or want to look at plans. You know where to find me at the end of the hallway, so feel free to reach out or pop in.
Thank you, Nick. Any comments or questions for Nick? Okay, last opportunity for general public comment. Anybody would like to address the planning commission, please indicate. Your willingness to do so. All right, I'm not seeing anything, so let's move on. Ryan, I see you're back here. Can you, is there a report to provide from the board of trustees?
Back, reporting live from the soccer fields. Some sad news, many of you I'm sure saw that former retired police officer Mike Wilson passed away. Earlier this week. His wife is also an employee of the township, so. Lots of positive thoughts their way in order to have the township participate in. His services, they're going to close the office on Friday at eleven thirty, so. I think that's a wholly appropriate thing for them to do, and I'm sure your kind thoughts and prayers and words or whatever it is you want to put out into the universe will be appreciated by the family. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, many of you I'm sure have either seen in our meeting last week or have. Heard the scuttlebutt across the township. The board has decided to dissolve the DDA. We took a mostly ceremonial vote to do so, six to one last week. Next month, we'll pass the official. Ordinance to repeal. The other ordinance that created the DDA ultimately. Various board members, I think, had different reasons for voting to. Dissolve it. I think for me, I can speak for myself, just haven't seen the. The change that we had hoped to see, the positive outcome that we had hoped to see over the last decade of its work. And it just is a constant source of drama, interpersonal drama, township drama. All sorts of drama, we can't seem to get past it. It's, it's done. In my opinion, a good job at tearing people apart rather than building us together to form a more positive. Township ultimately, which I think is, is. What it, what it existed for, so. Again, speaking for myself, not something I was thrilled to do, but. Just sort of resolved that that's where we were at at this point, so you'll see more formal action. Coming in the coming weeks on that, but. I'm sure if you haven't heard about it yet, you'll hear about it from folks. There's a small minority. In the township who seem incredibly upset by this. There's also a vocal minority who, who seems to think this is the. The best idea, and then I think I would argue there's a majority who would say we had a DDA. So I think ultimately, most folks don't know and, and don't have an opinion on this, but it will. As, as it has birthed and gone on for a decade, been full of drama, it will, for a small time here, also be full of drama as we close it down. And those are the two biggest items that I think. Rise to your attention.
Thanks, Ryan. Any comments from commissioners or questions for Ryan?
Just a comment on the DDA.
Oh, yeah, go, Ray.
I've been really involved. I knew what happened, but I still don't understand why, because I know that Marie wanted to keep it going and see to. It just seems to me that over the last couple of years, they've never had a quorum for the DDA. One, the previous supervisor didn't attend the meetings. It just seemed to me that part of, the, the biggest problem with the DDA was that they got no, they never had a, a quorum for their meetings, so how could they do anything? And. I think we wanted to see if she, she'd get the. Membership that probably PDAP was supposed to be, and then see what they could do over the next two, three months to, to get this thing back on track. But apparently the feeling is, is that we don't need the DDA for anything. And I know my thought about the DDA, maybe way from the beginning. They didn't define the DDA area. Correctly. I've never seen a DDA that stretches for two miles along one road. So maybe that's where the big problem is. I, I don't know what our infighting was, but just, I was surprised that they decided to dissolve it.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, and Ryan, are there, are there any financial implications to this? Are there tax dollars under the belt of the DDA that go away then, or what, what happens?
Yeah, so there's just south of three hundred thousand dollars, as I understand it from the treasure that's in the DDA account as of now. When the DDA is dissolved, that money should go back to the taxing authority, so most of that will come back to the township because the DDA was just collecting the growth. In that tax base since two thousand twelve in the township tax. And then there's a small portion that'll go to LCC. During my first term on the board, LCC, I think they lost some paperwork or something happened. They didn't opt out of the tax capture. They ended up trying to fight us on it, but ultimately they didn't file the right paperwork, so. Basically, they were the only folks that didn't opt out of that, so there is a chunk of money that will go to LCC. Ultimately, the board has stated a commitment that that money will be spent on the DDA area. You know, there's some criticism that says that we could change our mind on that, and that's certainly true, but. I know that the intention of the board members that I've spoken to and certainly my own is to reinvest it into that corridor. So that's, that's the hope, long term. Ultimately, we're not losing out really as a township on any tax other than. Keeping LCC's tax for ourselves and. You know, I work for a nonprofit during my day job that does all it can for higher education, so to me, that's not a real win to take money away from the local. Community college that serves a, a bunch of our students, but. Arguably, that is the only amount of tax that we would be losing out of the coffers of the township able to do some of this work.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Other comments? Okay, so let's move on. So last opportunity for commissioners, just to. To speak on any topic, agenda or non-agenda.
And there was one thing I forgot from report from planner, I apologize.
Sure, sure.
I want to make sure that I don't forget to mention this, like I did last time. Superintendent Hildebrandt did mention it at the board meeting last week, but I think it, it may have been overshadowed by everything else that was going on. I do just want to reiterate for anybody who's watching that the application window for capital improvement. Plan projects is open. That will be open through Friday, June eighteenth. It's my plan that the second meeting in June, we will. Have any applicants from the community come and talk about their projects. You know, explain what the project is and why they think it would be beneficial to the community. So again, I just wanted to put that out there, again, out into the. The viewership, just so that people were aware of that. The application can either be found on the township website or if somebody would rather fill it out on paper, they're welcome to come in and ask for one. And we'll get that for you. Actually, on that same note, I wanted to ask about the second meeting date for June. It's currently scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty second. Just for the sake of the. Timeframe with presentations for CIP projects, I wanted to ask if there was any opposition to moving that second meeting date. From June twenty second to June twenty ninth, which would be that following Tuesday.
Nope, not for me.
Neither.
Same with me.
Okay with me.
All right, so I'll go ahead and, and, you know, note that change and, and make sure that it's posted appropriately, appropriately, so everyone's aware of it. And, and thank you.
So I know that there are three members on the, the Webster Road Subcommittee. I'm just wondering if there's any, any updates to share. About work that you, you are doing. And what is it, George, Ray, and John? I think you're all on the Subcommittee, right?
That's correct.
We had one meeting. Haven't had another one yet.
Okay.
Aaron, I think they want another meeting.
Yeah, actually, I was going to request one sometime this week. I was going to call the superintendent. I'll let her speak. I see she's unmuted.
Thank you for unmuting me. I was trying to find the button. We will be having another one. I am going on vacation. I hate to rub that in anybody's face, but I'm going on vacation this week and I'll be back the second of June. I will be scheduling another meeting. I've had some homework from the previous meeting that I have completed. And I know that others are chomping at the bit to get going on that, so look for your next meeting invite in the next couple of weeks and we'll get the ball rolling even faster on that one.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments? George?
I just, my usual thanks for all those that attend and work, you know, in our community. And appreciate the meetings, how well they're run here. I appreciate that, Dan, and all those superintendent. Attending tonight, obviously. Also, I do echo Ryan in the fact of keeping our township and community and. Things that have been happening in the offices there to keep them in your thoughts and prayers also to. You know, support them, that work there, and that, you know, they've had a couple losses here. And with the. Baseball, also just. Thoughts go out to all those.
Thank you, George.
Affected by that.
Ryan?
Just a thank you to all of you for your patience with me as I move children around during the middle of our meeting. It's deeply appreciated.
All right, if they're, yeah, great.
It's not a planning commission issue, it's a, it's a. Code enforcement issue. That sign on Chandler Road just south of Clark is still there. I don't know what's happening with that thing.
I, I'll pass that along again to code enforcement, but. Just moving forward, I would encourage anybody who has something they've noticed to contact Kevin Douglas. He's our code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? It looks like we are wrapping things up here.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll support.
Support by George. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, everyone, for attending tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you.